We need any reference on this agricultural. You got it covered, Scott. Good evening. Before the regular council meeting starts, we're going to have a public hearing for agricultural. Let me see how this is ordered. Agricultural district hearing, is that what it's called?
For CAUV.
For CAUV, okay. So, I'm going to call this public hearing to order at 6:00 PM. This is for renewal of application for farmland. Kelly, could you call the roll?
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Aman?
Present.
All right, pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 929.02, a renewal application for properties within the city limits are in agricultural district and have requested a renewal application to be approved by the City of New Franklin Councilman. It'll list all the properties. Lawrence and Carol Snyder, 7250 Benner Road, parcel number 24-00307. Everett Fleming, 6100 South Main Street, parcel number 23-04195. Laura Packard, 5563 Taylor Road, parcel number 25-00483. Joan Shannon Hercules, 5060 Karen Drive, three different parcel numbers, parcel 23-00859, Nick Keaches, trustee, 5737 Van Buren Road, two parcels, parcel 24-00112, 24-00113. Lori Chula, 1523 West Center Road, parcels, two parcels, parcel 23-00578 and 23-00579. Ryan Mueller, at 5867 Manchester Road, parcel 23-00555. And Aaron Wretch, at 4241 State Road, parcel 26-00826. Are there any public questions or comments regarding these parcels? I think it just says adjourn.
Motion.
We need a, we need a motion to approve, okay. We need a motion to approve, I make a motion to approve these parcels.
Second.
First and second, is there any discussion? Kelly, call the roll.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Do we need a motion to adjourn, or just state that we are adjourned in the public hearing at 6:03 PM?
Hope that wasn't too tough on you.
Everybody was sweating a little bit. All right, so before the regular council meeting starts, we have our committee meetings, and these committee meetings are less formal than the actual meetings, so if anyone from the public would like to make some comment, you're welcome, raise your hand. It is up to the committee chair on whether they want to call on you. We ask you to keep any comments as brief as possible. Tonight, we have four first readings and two second readings. We'll start with Resolution 24R23, which is Mr. Cox on the Finance Committee. Thank you. We will open a Finance Committee meeting at 6:04. Resolution 24R23, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Police District Fund and declaring an emergency, and this is our usual transfer of $250,000 from the General Fund to the Police District Fund. Questions, comments? Wave three? Get the answer. Our next resolution is Resolution 24R24, a resolution approving a then and now purchase order for outstanding invoice from Striker in the total amount of $15,300 and declaring an emergency. And this is for the purchase of the AEDs that just announced that installed in the parks area. Fantastic. Why?
Well, we had some problems with the invoicing and getting the invoicing, and then when we did get the invoicing, it was dated back farther than actually, you know, it was dated in the previous year. When we first got it, we didn't even have the equipment, so there were some holdups with it, so, and then some other invoices that came later, so we just figured it would be better to just do it this way and, and get it, get it handled that way rather, because they're not, it was just a mess, basically.
So, when they placed the order for the AEDs area, had the purchase order drafted, correct?
They did not. No one put in a request for a purchase order, but, but when it came, we didn't even have the AEDs, so I think that's why they didn't. So, it just got to be this kind of a, a mess. So, this is cleaning up that mess.
I mean, I, I would just assume that they're placing an order that have a purchase order already done, but it sounds like that wasn't the case there.
Exactly.
Is that standard for other departments?
This is unusual for, this came out of fire. So, usually that's not an issue.
Yeah.
We could ask them to come and explain. I don't think it was just the, you know, the lapse in requesting the purchase order, the process was just odd, for whatever reason, in terms of where, when we could get them, where are we going to get them, and et cetera, so.
Yeah.
But, of course, would be, and we don't, yeah, we don't really run into this very often, we don't sue too many of these.
No.
Right.
The original, the original resolution didn't even have, they didn't know at that point where they were even getting them. So, that's not in the original resolution. There's not a price in the original resolution, because they had not, they were scoping it out at that point, they were just checking it out. So, there was never any time that, that there was a resolution that said that price, that improved that price. So, this also does that, as well as improving the price, because the previous resolution did not have a vendor nor a price. So, that takes care of that problem, too. And also, I think part of the reason that, that that was, besides the mix-ups of not getting them and that kind of thing, I think because it was a parks thing, but the fire was heading to it up, that maybe they didn't, you know, it didn't register, so.
We have a supply chain issues with this thing.
So.
I mean, the idea was almost here and there, if I'm not mistaken. And it's consistent with the revised code. I know it was discussed, I don't know if it's been adopted, but requiring these AEDs in public parks, so we were trying to be conform with that as well.
Yeah, I guess my point was maybe just a quick reminder to staff and stuff, I think you've got to have the money actually encumbered before you're technically allowed to expend it. Maybe just a quick reminder to them, I know I said honest and safe, but.
Yes, and they know that, and that's why that has to be a then and now, because that gives us the authority to do it, do so, and like I said, the other part was to actually approve the vendor and, you know.
Any other questions, comments? We'll wave you three. We'll close Finance Committee meeting at 6:08. Next, we've got Mr. Schaefer, he's got two resolutions.
I think I'm.
Mr. Schaefer, I can get.
About to open that. Community Development Committee at 6:09 PM. Resolution number 24R25, resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreement with Meyer Design Inc. for an arch swing set for Grill Park and declaring an emergency. The mayor asks, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, if I can speak for this. We're going to want these, we know, we know what we want. There was a original, and Parks has been dealing with this for quite a while, and we want to put them, we spoke to this last time around at Grill Park, we want to get some swings in there, the people at Grill have asked for that. This is going to supplement the Parks equipment that's already over there. We were looking at a format that had six swings, four of them were the, I think they call them the bucket swings, and, and there was going to be an ADA inclusive and a toddler bucket, and then there was, that was only $10,000 or so. Then there was a request to add what now is being referred to as a. Who is the one, a, a. You knew the name of this one, Jim, there was a.
Suction swing.
Oh, it's a suction, I was trying to, it was a hard technical term.
Pound.
Round, I hate this part. Anyway, and so, what we thought was going to happen when we added this, and the price went up about $3,000, and we thought there was going to be an extra component of the set, and then this would hang, but then, fortunately, we talked at Parks last night with this, and one of our Parks guys said, well, you know, they've cut this from four of the belt swings down to two, and the price went up $3,000, and this doesn't make sense. So, we got to get back to the vendor. We think it's a good faith thing, this Myers, Mr. Myers came out and made a presentation along with a couple other vendors when we were thinking about swings, it's a local company, but they've, they've got a good reputation, they've handled a number of, they've got their equipment at a number of various parks, so we got to get back with them and fine tune this. I've had a hunch that the price is going to be the same, I think the proposal, this needs to be rewritten to flesh out the additional items we're supposed to get.
Is this labor and are there other quotes, or we don't, that said?
We have other quotes.
Is that part of this, or?
Well, no, actually, it was vetted by the Parks.
Okay.
Commission, so they took a look and talked, we had different vendors out there, so they reviewed all the various vendors, and they, it was their opinion that this was, you know, this was a solid vendor and a good price.
Is that installed, or is that?
Yeah, it is installed.
Turnkey. Okay. Any other questions, I think we're, we're out of time. So, do we want to take another, while this community's open?
Yeah, you go ahead and do it.
Go ahead, Barry.
All right, I'm going to take Resolution number 24R-19. This is a second reading. Resolution authorizing Franklin to enter into an agreement with Abrams Family Contracting for the construction of a pavilion at Grill Park and declaring an emergency. We talked extensively about this at the last meeting, we had questions with some of the work that the Service Department is going to do. First, the pavilion's $21,000, there's some concrete that is already approved that we didn't have to look at, it's 100 to $10,000 threshold. We asked for a drawing of the park with where everything's going to go, which we've got, and it looks, makes sense to me anyhow. The Service Department's going to do some work there, it was determined that we're going to ask workers over there and some equipment. The value of work and the equipment at $2,523.20 to be that job. Materials, which included some grass seed, straw, screen and topsoil, and fuel, to the tune of $1,566.40. This was put together by our Service Department, so our Parks budget is going to pay back the Service Department into their budget to the tune of $4,089.60.
If I may.
Yes.
The intention would be to, it wouldn't be paying back to Parks, I mean, the, the materials, that $1,566.40 would be paid through the Parks.
Okay.
There would not be reimbursement to the Service Department for the $2,523.20. That's part of their responsibility, I mean, the Parks are included, along with cemeteries, roads, ditches, all the other works that the Park, that the Service Department does, and this is just, they'll be on-site doing this work instead of being somewhere else. So, I, I think the, the question was well asked last time about, you know, about the materials, and, and if we're paying these materials out of service, that's, that's, those are funds that could be used for other service purposes, the example was for paving, for instance. And fortunately, I, I wasn't sure, and I told you I wasn't sure how that was handled, we have routinely handled that through the Service Department, it's always been billed out to the Parks, it hasn't come out of the service, when it comes to materials. But, the actual service component is part of what they do every day, and, and so neither the Parks, nor the administration, nor anybody else would reimburse them for their time on the job or the equipment that they use.
I guess I still have an issue with that then, because I understand the Park, the Service Department is in charge of the Parks as far as maintenance. To me, this is an upgrade, this is not a maintenance issue, and I understand what the charter says and everything, but I still feel that the $2,532, or $23.20 should be rebated back to the Service Budget. Should come from the Parks Budget, it's a Parks project, it should be paid back to the Service Department.
The authority for that determination.
Yeah, you read it to us last time, I understand.
Well, I'm going to read again.
The director and the mayor's the director.
Right, I'm not, this is an power play, okay? I'm just telling you what the chart, what the people approve when they approve the chart. That the Department of Public Service makes the rules and regulations for governments, and the department includes, it doesn't, it doesn't limit it to what they do, it says the, the Service Department includes cemeteries, custodial, highways, parks and recreation, and planning and zoning. So, when the Service Department is out cleaning ditches, or, or dealing with, take your pick, when those, the Service, our Deputy Service Director has been invested with the responsibility, authority to supervise his people, and, and to meet those responsibilities. So, if they have to work in the cemetery, they go work in the cemetery. If they got to go work in the Parks, they go work in the Parks. I mean, this is no different, when, when they came up here and worked, and did a lot of work here on these grounds, on the administration grounds, they didn't build a general, we didn't, we didn't build the, the administration building, when they go over there and work at the Fire Department, they don't build the Fire Department. And it would seem to me to be really unfair to make them, to build the Parks and Rec for the same services that they're providing everywhere else. It's not taking off the, you know, it's, it just doesn't seem equitable to me. If we started to do that with Parks, then we should do it with every department. But then I suppose if the ambulances have to go over to the, to the Service Department, they ought to build the Service Department, you know, for the emergency room. I mean, I, I respect your point on that, but I thought this thing through, it, this is consistent with what we've always done, and I just think it's inequitable to tax that Parks funds for this. I think, I think the difference is that this is an addition, this is construction. So, like parking lot here, the work that was done here, it was all maintenance. The ditches, it's all maintenance. They go over to the Fire Department, I don't think they're building anything at the Fire Department, I think they'd be going over there to work on maintenance, I think, I think, correct or wrong, but I think that's the point. I call this cost sag, so whether the money is pulled from one or the other, I think it should be noted when it's construction at a bare minimum. So, I appreciate the fact that we at least have allocated a notation in, in the legislation as to what the cost is. But I do think that when there's, when there's construction, and you're, this is your game, but I think it's important that you understand that the number of council members field, there should be when there is construction.
I appreciate the input. I'll give it first, I think, I think it's going to be a larger issue when it comes to Sisler Park, the walking track. I've been at a couple of Parks meetings, and I know that we're going to use the Service Department to do some of that walking track. And, you know, it's, the Parks is granted a certain, what is it, 5% of the budget?
Being done.
So, if being done at Park, and it is an improvement, it should come out of that, that budget, it shouldn't hit another department's budget. That's just my opinion. So, I'm going to ask for more time so we can think about this a little bit.
Well, you take more time, that's, it's not going to get built, okay? We've got baseball coming up here in a couple, in, you know, a month, month and a half. If you, you know, if, I'd be interested in what, what you're looking for, what you're looking to achieve in this additional time. Need to change my mind, or, I mean, is there anything else that would, you know, that's going to be relevant to further consideration? Because I, we've been talking about this pavilion for a long time, and the people at Grill would like to have that pavilion, I'm sure, when their baseball season starts. So, you know, if the only issue is who's going to pay this $2,523, I mean, is that the only issue that we need more time for? And, and what, we're, we're going to come back in two weeks and decide if I've changed my mind and say, yeah, we're going to go ahead and build the Parks Department for that?
Well, when you break it down like that, it is.
Well, I'm just asking.
Because my opinion, the Grill, the Grill Park needs the pavilion, I think that it's a well-planned-out project to have over there, we're just talking about what budget our money's going out of.
If, and, first of all, business is business, so I appreciate your point of view.
And I've run business for thirty-something years.
And if I'm, if I'm a little bit passionate about this, we don't have a lot of Parks here to begin with. When you compare what's going on in New Franklin with cities all over the place, we're at the low tier. We have a limited amount of money that we can spend on it. You know, to take $2,500 away from potential playground equipment at Sisler, I mean, it's like I'm robbing from the kids. You know, we had the Sisler, the Service Department came in and hung all these beautiful pictures up over here, all right? That's a new project. You want me to get an hourly on that and build the, and build the administration for that, for the time they spent over here? This isn't the only new project that the Service Department's involved in. You know, every time they put up a, a new four-way stop, that's a new project, I mean, I'm puzzled. And you can allocate, I mean, if you think we're underfunded in Parks, you know, we could allocate more money to the Parks, what we're, what we're asking for is an accounting of the activity, that's all. And, and that's, that's what every business does, it's a, it makes it clear, it makes it clear that it's understood that the issue, as I understand it, and, and what's kind of confused me a little bit through this process, is that it's almost, and I hate, for God's sakes, I hate using this word, but it's almost like the Park, or the, the Service Department ends up kind of being like a slush fund, and that it can just dabble in this and dabble in this and that, and we're asking just to turn up some of that accounting when it comes to an improvement. That's, that's the point. I don't think, I don't think the ask is big, and, and if you think that we're robbing from the kids, and we need to maybe have some legislation to appropriate more money to the Parks, then let's have that discussion. But doing it by ducking accounting for funds that are being spent from the Service Department on Parks, I think is just not transparent. Aren't we giving them the left pocket, right? Yes, we are, that's exactly what we are. That's exactly what it is. All right, so, are you suggesting, and first of all, I appreciate this conversation, all right? You know, I'm not, I'm trying to tell you my point of view, I'm not trying to be argumented. So, what if I come to you in two weeks with a resolution asking to transfer from the General Fund $2,523.20 to the Parks? That would be more transparent than. We'll do it that way, if that's the way we guys want to do it, we can do it that way. Does that make sense to you, Barry?
It does make sense.
Yeah, I mean, that's the transparency that we're talking about. Well, the transparency comes from this discussion, okay? That's a lot of extra bookwork, all right? That's, that's. We'll put it together and do it once a year, then it's not a lot of extra bookwork. Do the allocation, do the, do your. Try to do an estimate on what the costs are going to go to do it for a year, or.
And it's going to be truly transparent, in my opinion. I understand the way it's written, anything under 10 grand, council doesn't need to have their fingers in it. But in this particular case, the pavilion, $21,000, the concrete for the pavilion, one project should have come in this same resolution. We should have approved or not approved the 21K, the $10,000 for the concrete, plus this board. It shouldn't be divided up, because if we're going to do that, you could literally go out and get one company to frame it, one company to roof it, get every bill under 10K, and none of it would ever come to fire council.
Well, you can't, we can't break up a, a project for purposes of trying to avoid the $10,000 limit. We didn't, you know, we didn't break it up that way, these were two separate, they were bid separately.
Oh, my, they were bid separately.
With bid separately from, from one. So, we could not, nor would we, on the pavilion itself, try to, try to bid out the electrical here and the carpentry there, you know, than building a specific project, but.
I think, I think you, I think you need to keep in mind that, that council passed a resolution that said anything that was, any capital project or anything like that that we talked about in putting the budget together, and was part of the, the construction of the budget, did not have to come before council again. Even the, the cars and the trucks, and, you know, then you limited yourselves to being able to see every item and the exact price for it. Because when you went, when you looked at your budget, you just saw the estimate, what we thought it was going to be, you didn't know where we were going to get it, whatever it might be. So, you, I think you need to understand that, too. By that resolution, you limited yourselves from having to know the things that you're asking about right now.
I don't think that resolution accounted for the pavilion, that was just vehicles program.
Correct.
No, it's a capital, I believe it's a capital project.
I think one, one, the issue, the way I, I kind of see it, is, as, as Barry mentioned, the Parks gets 5% of the income tax for improvements to the Parks, and the Service Department is responsible for maintaining once those improvements have been made. When the Service Department, and I'm using the Service Department because that's who we're talking about, when the Service Department has a budget here, and money is being used out of their budget for park improvement, whether it's they're doing jobs or whatever, if it's an improvement on, you know, a, a project, using the, the possible trail around Sisler as an example, using this, that, that's money that's coming out of their budget. So, that's money that's, that's, you know, it's, it's just time, but it's time that they're not able to use somewhere else. If we didn't use the Service Department, we would pay a contractor that money more, we would pay a contractor to do that, which would come out of the Parks Improvement Fund. So, it is, it just seems like, yes, it's right, left pocket, but they have a, they have a budget that they're working within, and when they're doing projects for this type of thing, that's basically taken away from their budget a little bit.
It's more impassioned to say you're taking it from the kids, but in this case, you're taking it away from the streets, you're taking away from vehicles, you're taking away from ditches. We, we understand that, we're not talking about, this doesn't diminish the funds available to the Service Department, this $2,500. There's no cash flow out of the Service Department.
In a way it does, because that, that labor is being used on something else other than maintaining the Parks, other than maintaining the roads, other than.
Yeah, these guys in this truck, or, or over at Grill Park, instead of those guys perhaps being.
Clearing the ditch.
Clearing the ditch.
Right.
I mean, one way or another, those guys are still working, okay? There's no cash flow. Right, because they're responsible for clearing ditches, okay? They are also responsible for working at the park.
Maintenance of the park.
It doesn't, no, there's no, it doesn't say maintenance of the park, you guys are saying maintenance of the park, you're drawing that distinction between maintenance and a new project, that's nowhere, that's not in the charter. I mean, it's, they allocate them, they, you know, this is where they. And we could, we can do it the other way, you know, it's going to, you know, it'll take some additional bookkeeping. I don't know, I'm sure. And so what we're envisioning is that, that from some fund, well, I guess from what I'm hearing you say, from the Parks Fund, contractual, or whatever fund we pull it out of, the Service Department is going to bill the Parks Department for $2,500, and then Parks are going to pay the Service Department, so they're going to have an extra $2,500, good. And then if we want to get that money back into the Parks, then we're going to have to do a transfer from the General Fund back to the Parks. Because, you know, it's, I mean, if that's the way you want to do it. That is absolutely logical in every realm of the world that I've ever been involved in, except for this one. So, that's everyday business, everyday. Yeah.
I think what happens when you do it that way, is at the end of the year, we say the Parks gets 5% of the income tax, but at the end of the year, if we're pouring money out of different departments, we don't really know what was spent in there. At the end of this year, or maybe 2024. At the end of this year, or maybe twenty-twenty-five, if we continue to do this, you can say at the end of the year, we truly spent X amount of dollars in the parks. It's more than the five percent, or it's less than five percent. If it's more than the five percent, hey, we need to add some legislation and say, with what we're doing in the parks, we wanna, we wanna have six percent of the budget there.
It's never more than the five percent. The five percent is the, the, the percentage that, the, of the funds that go into parks.
Why is five percent the income tax?
Why is it, it's never more than five percent, because we should step off to the service department or...
He's saying the five percent goes in.
I understand.
So, you're talking, we're talking about what goes in versus what goes out.
But at least we...
Alright, I get it. I mean, when they're working over at the cemetery, who should they bill for that?
Are they doing improvements? Are we adding?
Sure.
Are we adding ground to the cemetery? That's a different story.
Let's assume they are.
If they're adding, if you're buying acreage, and that, that acreage has to be improved and more to expand the cemetery?
Who should they bill?
Well, cemeteries is under service, though. And cemeteries is in the service budget. Parks are in the service budget?
They're in, oh, I see what you're saying.
Well, if you're, if you're gonna talk about land acquisition or something, that's probably gonna be pulled from the general fund, doesn't it?
Right. This is everyday business everywhere else. I, I, just not municipality government, and that's what we're asking.
Hey, my job is to get along with you guys. That's the way you wanna do it. We can do it that way. It's a little extra work. Um, uh, you know, and, and so, but if that's the way you wanna do it, we can do it that way. I guess we'll have to break down every project, because when we get to Sisler, we'll have to decide, you know, who's... We can do it that way. That's the way you guys wanna do it. Alright, so if we're gonna do the logging trail, let's say it costs, that, that means it's gonna be fifteen thousand dollars of their service, of their time. So, I guess we'll, you know, we'll come and ask to transfer fifteen thousand from the general fund, and we'll have to approach this differently, you know, when we're doing budgets, try to do an estimate of what we're doing.
Well, I, I don't know if you necessarily have to come and, and take money from the general fund to the parks. I think the parks, then, when they're looking at a project, they're able to see the total cost of that project as they're moving forward, and not just a, an assumed, uh, total. So, so then decisions could be made as far as what to do with the, you know, is, is the trail, using a trail as an example, is the trail worth this extra, this amount of money, the total cost? And then if, if the parks need more money for that specific project, for whatever reason, uh, then that's when, when we can come and look at taking money from the general fund for it. But, you know, when they're planning their projects, they're able to look at what is the actual total cost.
Let me, let me ask a question, Sue. Is there, so rather than billing, so we, we go through this at my company, where you have an, an allocation of expenses from one apartment to another, um, and I don't know this, because I honestly haven't got my head completely wrapped around government accounting. It's very different than private accounting.
Yes, yes.
Is there a way to show that expense without billing it and paying it?
There would have to be, uh, salary lines and...
Okay.
And, you know, benefit lines in the other fund, and then we would have to know exactly how many hours in each pay period that would have to be designated, so that we could...
So, the invoice would probably be easier.
Well, I don't know, I don't know about that. Either way, I mean, once it becomes an invoice, then from now on, then it's gonna have to be invoiced through our office, and let us, and let our human resources person verify the, you know, the actual salaries and benefits and all that kind of stuff, rather than just a number.
So, you can't, you can't, so we, in the private industry, we'll, we'll pick a number. So, we'll take salary or hourly rate times a hundred and fifty percent, and figure that covers benefits, that covers all that kind of stuff, and we'll just allocate that, because it literally is one pocket to the other. But that's the goal, is to take it from one pocket to the other and show that that's change.
Right. And if you want to see that in, in, for example, the parks fund, the best way would be to have those lines set up, rather than just to have a, you know, a checking or whatever. Because then you'll see, oh, we have this much in personnel services that were acquired as part of, in the parks.
I think the important thing is the visibility. I think the important thing is understanding when you look at the year-end to say, this is the number of dollars that we spent on parks. So, I guess I wanna be, I wanna be careful jumping to a conclusion that we've gotta do something in one specific way. I wanna step back and make sure we understand the goal. Do I, can I say that right, Mr. Schaefer, that the goal is the visibility of the dollars?
To me, that's what the goal is.
Yeah. So, there may be more than one way to skin a cat.
Yes.
Um, and, and accomplish the same thing.
Yeah.
We don't necessarily have all the answers in this room.
Now, for Brian, it might be harder to do it the way that I was saying the other way, that you wanna know about by-lining items. Because then he has to on every, on every one of his time sheets for every individual that did that work, he would have to designate those specific hours as parks or whatever, where normally it's just eight, 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 wouldn't, you know? So, for him, it would be more time-consuming possibly to do it that way.
I, I think, Mr. Schaefer, I think you make a good point about just, you know, having the visibility of it, whereas, uh, uh, instead of having to worry about every minute that each individual service employee is working on, on a particular thing, uh, the, the parks department can say, here's our project, here's how we want the service department to be involved. What is an estimated cost to do it?
Right. Because we got those numbers in this, in this information. We got, they were just estimated, I, I can't remember the, the dollar per hour it was, but it was, it was a number applied to hours, and that's how you came up with that, whatever that dollar amount.
Right.
So, you know...
These are, they're Brian's figures. He provided these tests.
Okay.
So, at the end of the year, or when we're talking next year's budget, we're able to look at, at, uh, his budget, we're able to look at the parks budget, and, and be able to say, well, the service department spent this much money in, for the park improvements.
Mr. Powell was gonna say something, I'm, I guess I'm curious also if the state auditor could, could give us any insight as to other ways, so...
That's what I was gonna say. If you're like me, I can see what, because they can basically tell us what has been done, if anything, at other places, and how they would wanna see it done.
What I was gonna say, I think, you may be diving too deep into the weeds there, where I think they were just looking for a round number, not necessarily cost accounting of every minute spent out there, just something to get them a budgetary number.
Just like the, the invoice that you've been, yes, really.
Okay, but then that's not really the true number, then, is it?
No, but it's better than what we have. That, that's okay. Nobody's, nobody's looking for exact precise pennies or...
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify what you're looking for.
Well, a good example is, you know, how much wastewater fluid did they use in the trucks when they were driving over to work on the parks, and you can get stupid about accounting. That's the world. You can also be realistic about it, and expect that you can get some visibility and some true accounting without being ridiculous. I, I'd like to propose something. This is a pavilion that we all think should be built. I think that's pretty out, out in the open. Everybody's good with this. I think we've had a good discussion about cost seg, which is something that we've, we've kind of briefly talked about, now we're diving in a little bit deeper. I'd like to ask that we, we vote on this tonight, and hold the administration's feet to the fire to this concept going forward. We can maybe go into it with a little bit more information, with the auditor, maybe talk to some neighboring municipalities, see if they do any kind of cost seg with their service department. Does that make sense?
I'm good with that, because I really think the pavilion needs to be built. I think it'd be a good thing for the park to make, that gets it going. And, you know, if we get this type of information with every proposal we get from the board, you know, the drawing, the breakdown up front, uh, you know, in case, uh, in the case of the eventual track over here, if there's gonna be any water issues, I'd have those addressed before it gets to council, so we know that there's not gonna be any, then we can make a quick, informed decision on it. I mean, we would have that.
Appreciate it. That makes sense. I'm on board.
And, and I think that would be good for the parks also, when they're planning their projects, that they're able, again, to see the total cost of the project, not just, you know...
Right. I'm not wrong about that.
Alright, so where are we going with it?
Close of committee?
Yeah, I think so. We're good, we're good with voting on that.
Alright, we are going to close the community development committee at six forty P.M.
Alright, uh, next, we have one resolution left, and that is Mr. Powell's and the public committee.
Twenty-four, twenty-six.
Alright. Didn't I try to skip over your one before, though?
Maybe.
There it is, okay. Twenty-four, R. twenty-six, Streets and Drainage Committee, Mr. Almond.
Thank you. We will open up the Streets and Drainage Committee at six forty-one. We have resolution number twenty-four, R. twenty-six, and resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into a five-year, five-year agreement with Clinton Lawn Care for the New Franklin maintenance services. I looked over it. It's a pretty good rate comparable to like last year, I was looking at it. They do the maintenance cemetery, Grill Cemetery, Kaiser Cemeteries, and all three cemeteries we have here in New Franklin. The fire station, Sisler Fields, the pickleball court, City Hall, Walens Park, Block Heart, Grill Park, Layside Service Department, that wasn't enough for the list. That's all they'll cover. They're not increasing the rates that much. Some of them are keeping the same. I don't think we've got any grants with the quality of service they provide here in New Franklin yet. Is there anything else, anybody else would like to provide upon that?
So, I, I think it's important to note that they're locking in their rate for five years. Um, I requested some information, got a total year-end cost of what we're looking at, and if you look at that over the course of five years, it becomes a substantial amount of money. But have, they, they look like they're pricing, you know, but do we know, have we looked at any others, have we gained other quotes or anything?
We have not this time around. We, uh, we did, when we first, uh, I think Mr. Dietrich is here, uh, we did that when we first, um, started doing business with Clinton Lawn Care. An important factor has been the, as has been mentioned, the, the quality of the service, because that was an ongoing problem, uh, before, before.
Especially with the cemeteries.
Yeah. And so, now we have, uh, we've got people, you know, people are satisfied, very satisfied with the service. Uh, I, I didn't shop it out this time, but on the other hand, one of the reasons I didn't was because it's, you know, fifty dollars more in total for all of it, so I guess, I, I'm assuming that it was a good price when we approved it the last time around, and it's really not going up.
And it's a significant...
Yeah. So, we didn't, we didn't shop it out.
Because it was such great service. And we've really had a lot of complaints before.
Yeah, we sure did.
And actually, it's been great service.
If, if I may, uh, this is, uh, proposed to be a five-year contract, and, uh, three years ago, they proposed a five-year contract, but you chose to go with a three-year contract instead. Uh, feeling different this year, Mr. Mayor?
Well, we got three more years under our belt, I guess, and, uh, yeah, I'm, I guess I've already stated, I'm comfortable with the work that they're doing. Uh, the, uh, and, you know, with the price lock-in of five years, I think it's a, you know, it's really, it's a win-win.
Okay.
And we lock them in for the five years, and I think in fairness to a, you know, in deference to a local company that's given us good service, this sure helps them with their five-year planning.
Sure, absolutely. And, and I agree, they've, they've been done, going one foot down for it. Please don't take this the wrong way. Um, so, with this contract, uh, it would be doing all twelve properties would be fifteen hundred and twenty-nine dollars a week, uh, or thirty-one weeks in the season. Uh, and as the information we received last year, uh, they did twenty-eight weeks. So, we'll go with that. So, at twenty-eight weeks, I thought I wrote it down, I guess I did it. Okay. So, at thirty-one weeks, oh, yeah, twenty-eight weeks, uh, it would be a total of forty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for the year, uh, if they did twenty-eight weeks. Now, last year, we approved a, hired a new employee for the service department, and their probationary rate plus benefits is twenty-two dollars, sixty-nine cents per hour. Uh, that works out to be nine hundred, seven dollars a week, or a total of forty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars for the year, plus benefits. If we're spending forty-two thousand for approximately six months' worth of work, would it make sense for us to just hire another service department employee that we have available year-round, and allow the service department with that additional employee to take care of the, the mowing? Looking at the properties, now, I'm certainly no expert in mowing, so it's just my guess, but it looks like it could, the properties could easily be done weekly by one person, uh, because of the size, and split them up and things like that. So, just throwing it out there, would it make sense for us to hire someone that we have available year-round, that could help with other projects throughout the year, that could help with snow removal, uh, in the wintertime, that when they're not mowing, can help with, uh, direct traffic, uh, or other projects that are going on?
Do we have the equipment for this?
I believe we have most of the equipment, yes.
We need more equipment, or no? Do you think the equipment we have already is acceptable for the project?
I'm, I'm not an expert on it, but, but yes, I believe the, the equipment we have would, that we currently have would, you know, so I... Now, granted, in a couple of years, we might have to buy more equipment.
More water, sure.
Sure. So, that's certainly understood.
What are the equipment we use elsewhere also now? If we already have it, I'm thinking we use it elsewhere in years.
Yeah, yeah, because...
Because so much they do in these other projects.
Well, we do, uh, I believe they do some mowing in, in some areas, so...
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we mow anywhere else?
No, we've moved all the mowing to...
In fact, in fact, Brian was the one that wanted to move all the mowing to, to...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we've discussed, and I, I, you also have to figure out, I mean, you figured out the salary.
Right.
But when you add the benefits and stuff...
That's plus benefits.
That comes up to seventy, eighty thousand dollars for that employee, and you got the equipment, and, uh, you got the, you know, you got one more guy out there working with the workers comp and the liability and a variety of those things. But I was gonna say what, what Mr. Cook said, that I went back to my notes when we first made that transition, and it was, uh, it was a recommendation from the service department, who I'm figuring, you know, factored those things out, and decided that this made more sense for us.
I don't, you wanna let him talk?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna have to answer closely about that stuff.
You gotta say who you are.
I'm Jim, I'm Dietrich, I'm owner of Clinton Lawn Care. So, I, um, just to speak from tons of experience, uh, those properties can't be mowed by one person in a week's time. Um, you'll see, Brian will see me up there sometimes at the cemetery, you have, you have your daughter, you know, with this stuff. Um, if you go up there and walk around and just envision yourself with a, a trimmer, trimming every single headstone, and then, you know, having to blow off every headstone and doing these things, and that's just the cemetery. You come up here, you know, you have, I mean, it's an incredible undertaking, to be honest. I don't do it all by myself. The, uh, the cemetery alone, I mean, you'd be, you'd be amazed. But, um, the other thing is, as far as equipment goes, I mean, we just, um, next, well, with the twelfth of April, I actually picked up a new, a new unit, a new zero turn, and I'm only saying this just for reference sake, but, you know, the reason we use these new mowers is their warranty. If I have a problem with it, we go pick up a new one until that one's fixed, so there's always, can never stop, basically. And that mower is now over fifteen thousand dollars, and that's just for one unit, you know, so in order for us to have five or six units like that running all the time, um, it's a lot, there's a lot involved in the equipment. You know, a trimmer that used to cost you three hundred dollars, this is a five hundred dollar trimmer, you know, and probably a dozen clothes, I mean, it goes on and on. And, uh, you talk about trailers, uh, to haul that equipment, it costs fuel, it costs maintenance, I, I mean, it's just, you know, like you said, we could get silly with it, like you were, so you end up up there. It's just, it, people kind of, obviously, uh, talk to me, um, you know, about a rate at times, how do we come up with this, you know? Brian Kepler will ask me, he's like, dude, I don't know what I'm doing for this. I say, well, you know, it's a calculated, uh, decision, really, as to coming in mower. Just for reference sake, with the cemetery, we're currently at a rate lower than the prior, the previous contractor who took care of the cemetery, and that was over a decade. So we're doing that, we've been saving the city money on that for the last, over the last ten years. So I think we're going on twelve years, I'd have to look it up. But we know that we can come in and charge more. I deal with other places. But here at the city, I try to keep things almost too literally true. So when I come into a meeting like this, it's like, well, we kind of just have to do it, you know what I mean? I'm kind of making it as simple as possible. Would I like to make more money on it? Sure. But I would rather come in and be able to show you the work that we do, what we can make out here every year, for kind of a very surprising rate, instead of having a dozen other guys in here. Now you're accepting bids. If someone beats my price, I guarantee you're gonna fire them within a month. But you're gonna have a lot of surprising bids. I mean, I don't want it to come with that, obviously, that's no fun. But if I knew that I was, if I knew that I was bidding against other, that my other companies, that bid would be higher, I mean. Because there's no sense in me just agreeing to take less money for the work, when I know that the competition is going to make that mark be higher. So that's just not where I'm at, you know?
I appreciate.
And I can answer so many questions about that. I don't know.
No, I don't disagree with you. I think you've done a wonderful job, and I think your prices are fantastic.
Yeah, no.
I don't have any argument with you at all. In fact, I appreciate that you came here to sit here with it, to be able to answer any questions that come up. But that doesn't happen. And if you took the time out to come here and, you know, I see these numbers, and I'm not opposed to these numbers, but I think it's important that we at least, you know, throw out, of course, you know, ideas, and does something else make sense? And, you know, this obviously probably not makes sense for us to do that. But we still have, you know, should talk about these options and what other options are available to us. But no, I have, I have no rights with you or your, you know, the jobs that you've been doing for us, and certainly appreciate, and again, appreciate you coming in.
My guess would be it would be really hard for us to do it for the cost that he's doing. That's, that's just my take from forty thousand with you after hearing that. I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing up that discussion. That's our job. I think that's, that's what we're supposed to do, so I think.
Good, well, I'm more than thankful to have you here, Jeremiah. How many people show up?
I'm happy to, absolutely.
Yeah, I think with the continued service that he's done, the rates he does, I think I'm comfortable with you agree tonight.
Everybody else?
Any other questions or comments? We will close the Streets and Drainage Committee at six fifty three.
All right, now we get on to Public Utilities Committee, Mr. Powell.
I'd like to open the Public Utilities Committee at six fifty two. Got resolution twenty four R seventeen. Resolution establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of adult use cannabis operators and the issuance of zoning permits or any other permits for the building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the cultivation process or retail sale of recreational marijuana and declaring an emergency. So we talked about this at the last meeting, we had some debate back and forth on it. We asked for time. I don't know if anyone's changed their mind on anything as far as which way they're leaning on this. I do know that there is currently not regulation on this particular issue. At the very latest, we'd see it would be sometime in August, September, before the implementation of it. So really, my opinion is passing a moratorium today is kind of premature, because we don't even know what we're passing a moratorium on. I'd like to recommend that we put this, you know, basically, table it for a date certain of August twenty first, which would be the second meeting in August. And we would hopefully have a better idea of what we're looking at, what we're talking about placing a moratorium on. We can probably make a better, more educated decision on what best option we want to do. What are your guys' thoughts on that?
Would it make sense to do that, or to just?
Withdraw?
Withdraw? And then if a new resolution wants to come about in August, we have more facts that make the resolution more specific as far as to go along with those?
I'm fine either way. I know we have mixed feelings on our panel here, some for, some against. And I thought just by recommending the table would kind of, I don't want to say satisfy everybody, but kind of be agreeable with everybody. I'm fine either way.
One concern is that, I, I'm good with table. I think, I think tabling or withdrawing is fine. I think the larger concern about this is that if the legislature does not do anything, and we get to September, which is, and I'm not an expert in this subject, but if I understand it right, that the bill that was passed by the citizens said that distribution and sale could start in September, somewhere around September of twenty twenty four. And between now and then, the legislature was supposed to come up with, or the state government, depending on how you view it, was supposed to come up with guidelines for that to happen. And that is my biggest fear at this point, is that if there is no, nothing clear, and then September comes around and somebody says, well, guess what? I'm gonna open this up, and this is what I'm gonna do, and you can't stop me. At least this legislation, or legislation that we would come up with in August, would require them to come to counseling. That was really my only goal with this. So I'd be fine with either, either withdrawing or tabling. Tabling, at least, somebody doesn't have to go through the process of reintroducing them. Do you care? Does it matter to you whether we table or withdraw?
Doesn't matter to me.
So what are the thoughts here? We just go down the, Jim?
I agree.
So Jim, so, okay. Harry?
I'm okay either way.
I agree.
I'm saying.
The table?
Probably Jim. I don't want to see a moratorium, so I'd rather. So we're all on the table, but it.
So would you say?
Either one was really.
Jim, is your legislation, what do you want to do with it?
I would prefer to table. Though it's there, and it could be, it could be withdrawn in August. So. So if it's tabled, because I don't know that we've done this, it would not be on every agenda between now and August.
It'd come back in.
It's tabled. It would come back in August.
I've never done that.
That's our job, is to challenge you, so. Yeah, well, if nothing else, we're not gonna do any, make any decision on it tonight. So if for some reason you would have to, well, we'll table it. And then if you find out that we didn't do that correctly, we could withdraw it.
So we vote on table?
Yeah, we have to vote on table. That's something I don't know.
So I know you can basically postpone it to a date certain. And if you name that date, I think that takes care of your requirements.
You can check on that. I mean, if you take time, you don't vote on that.
Right. It can take time if you want to look into the table versus withdrawal.
We could just take some time, and we'll try to have that answered by the time we come back in two weeks. Maybe that's, that's huge use. Make sure you don't do it wrong.
I also don't mind us being on the agenda, because I think it gets it out there for the public, that if the public wants to come in here and, you know, say this is crazy, or, or they support it, or whatever. I like seeing things on the agenda. I think that's, I think it's helping to say.
We'll try to get some guidance on that. And, I mean, if you table to a certain date, then you run some risk that somehow things accelerate down Columbus and things happen sooner than August, and then you might want to.
You may have to introduce new legislation.
Yeah.
And then.
Time will tell. Well, we'll get an answer to that.
So we'll just ask for a little more time?
Yeah.
So we'll move to the third reading.
We'll move to the third reading, we'll ask for a timeline, then I'll close the Public Utilities Committee at six fifty seven.
All right, that is all the committees. Did any of the other committees have anything they'd like to discuss today? Hearing none. Committees are over, or we go into the, do we, with flag, please? At six fifty on.
President of the United States, do the flag on the United States of America and to the Republic for whose stance one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, hold on, Ken.
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Schaper?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Ahmman?
Present.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting, March sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Have first and a second. Any discussion? Kelly, call the roll.
Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passed. Make a motion to approve the financials for February of two thousand twenty four, subject to audit.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? Kelly, call the roll.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any public comment? We ask that you keep your comment down for a minute. Hearing none. We move on to our first reading. Resolution twenty four R twenty three. Kelly, did you read it?
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district fund and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty four R twenty three.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty four R twenty three.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution twenty four R twenty four.
A resolution approving a then and now purchase order for an outstanding invoice from Stryker in the total amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is also signed to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty four R twenty four.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty four R twenty four.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passed. Move on to resolution twenty four R twenty five.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Meyer Design Incorporated for an art swing set for Grill Park and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is brought to the community development committee, and we're ready to vote, all right?
Time. Or we think, I thought we've ended the conclusion.
Yes.
No, this is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, it's ours.
Time was requested, time was.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Pavilion is longer.
I'm sorry, yes, you're right.
Time was requested, time is granted. Move on to resolution twenty four R twenty six.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into a five year agreement with Clinton Lawn Care for New Franklin Lawn Maintenance Services.
This resolution was assigned to the Streets and Drainage Committee. I'd like to move to make a, the way of the three, a motion to waive the three.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Ahmman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty four R twenty six.
Second.
Any discussion? Kelly, call the roll.
Mr. Ahmman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution twenty four R seventeen.
A resolution establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of adult, adult use cannabis operators and the issuance of zoning permits or any other permits for the building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the cultivation, processing, or retail sale of recreational marijuana and declaring an emergency.
Resolution was assigned to the Public Utilities Committee. We would like to ask for time.
Time was requested, time is granted. Resolution twenty four R nineteen.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Abrams Family Contracting for the construction of a pavilion at Grill Park and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Wolf, you've been doing a fine job, man. This was brought to the Community Development Community Committee, and we're ready to vote, right?
Yeah, so you need to waive the third reading.
Can we waive the third reading?
Yep. Go first.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Kelly, call the roll.
Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
The third leading, reading or pending legislation, that moves us on to the best part of the meeting.
Come here. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, we will begin with... I tell you, I look, I can't see it. We have solar glasses. Uh, we picked up a quantity of solar glasses. Um, and, uh, we will, uh, as we posted something today, uh, we will distribute these for people who want them, to to a customer, they have to come up here and get them. Uh, we've had, uh, we got a thousand pairs. Uh, and, uh, uh, we got them for about five hundred dollars. So, you know, I see them being sold for two or three bucks each. Um, we know the country schools would like to have some, we know the northwest schools would like to have some, we don't always get a chance, they've reached out to us. Uh, Man- the Manchester schools already have, they're providing them, I think Norton is as well, so we don't get a lot of opportunities to be helpful to those other two schools, so we'll distribute some over there, keep them here till we run out, and, um, come get your solar glasses. Um, uh, let's see, April first is the deadline for, uh, to, if you have complaints relative to valuation of your property with the auditor's office, we've advertised that a number of times on our site, go to some county auditor's office and they, uh, site, and they have the, uh, there's forms you can fill out there if you have a quarrel about your valuation. Um, I, I think these didn't come in maybe as bad as, as many people thought they might. Uh, so, I know most of us kind of bumped, but it wasn't the horrible, crazy bump that we were afraid of, but if you, if you want to challenge that, uh, you have until April first to do that. Uh, let's see, I gotta see somewhere to tell us about that, but I can find it. All right, let's see. Congratulations, uh, to Jack Daniels, uh, on, on his, uh, primary election win, to, uh, then run in November for a seat, uh, down in the Ohio House of Representatives, and, um, we, we wish him well in that regard, uh, and that he would do an excellent job down there. We want to extend appreciation to Mary Stormer for, for throwing her hat in the ring and running as well, and it was a good, clean race.
Absolutely.
Uh, and above board, uh, and, uh, and I want to commend both of them, because at least, at least the paths I've, uh, drove, science, uh, are down, uh, that's a big deal.
I, I remembered as I was pulling in here, one that I forgot, so I know there's at least one of them.
So, well done.
And they're both from New Franklin?
Yeah, two New Franklin people, and it's beautiful. All right. Uh, let's see, we've talked about the AEDs, and, and we posted that today, and they are in, uh, we've got a few more still coming up, that's still to put up, but, uh, right now, there's, uh, they're at the, the Sisler Pavilion, they're at the Sisler, um, tennis, pickleball courts, down at Lockhart Field, uh, at Miracle Park, and also at the Tudor House. Uh, and, uh, they are up and running, uh, they, they have the, the gizmo on there that makes sure if somebody tries to tamper with them, there's, it notifies, it's called a gizmo.
Yeah, I know this.
Is that a deluxe gizmo?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, and, uh, and in terms of, these things are really pretty amazing, uh, they have the audio instruction when you open them, and some of you may be familiar with that, but, uh, you know, there's printed instructions in there, and then there's an audio instruction, uh, and if you want more than that, visit, take a look at our website, because we direct you to a site that actually does it, and, I say that, that, that's serious business, obviously, couldn't be more serious. Uh, so, we're, it, it just took us a while to get them, but we're getting them up, and I think we have a few more yet to get up, so we'll let you know where those locations are. Um, not much more, the Easter egg hunt, uh, that the Portways Kiwanas, they do such, they did so many fine things around our community, and they'll be out at the Tudor House next Saturday, that activity starts at ten thirty in the morning, and the Easter egg hunt starts at noon. Uh, it's next Saturday, that would be March the thirtieth. Um, and finally, we have had some discussion, uh, the parks committee talked last night about, a little further discussion about the, um, this walking trail at Sisler. Uh, I'm awaiting a, a proposal from, uh, OHM, uh, for a site plan for that, uh, for that facility. Uh, you know, the idea is, there's discussion about wanting to do a, a trail, um, we've, there's been discussion about a permanent restroom, um, there's a discussion of some, some pretty significant playground equipment, there have been past issues relative to stormwater and drainage, and so we thought it'd be best if we got a proposal, and, and I'll bring that to you when I get it, to actually have them do a site plan, uh, for that facility, they, they provide that services at other parks, so we'll see how that comes in, and we can talk about that when I bring it to you, but, uh, it just seems it's, it's just such a nice complex now, that we want to be deliberate in terms of what we do for further development over there. So, uh, that's moving along. Uh, expect to have that, uh, by the middle of, of April, and probably something I'd bring to you, the beginning of May. Um, and, uh, there was discussion about, um, Bullis Park and, uh, a, a suggestion of at least perhaps to put some picnic tables down there. Uh, and, uh, as I thought about that, that came from Rosie Milliken, who's got a complaint, she's one of our just tireless volunteers, uh, and, but it was a good idea. And, and as I drive by, not to spend a whole lot of time on that, but the challenge there is that it's, it's a neighborhood park, but there's not a whole lot of neighborhood. You know, there's, there's neighborhood, you know, that pocket of, of Pin Oak, you know, just to the, to the east, and then, you know, to the south, there's, there's neighborhood, but, you know, to the north, you know, we've got the state park, and so, how much should be invested there, how much play and activity will it get? Uh, but we probably should start with something, and, and so, they're having that discussion about maybe some picnic tables, maybe some additional landscaping down there, or, you know, maybe some, you know, I thought a lot of garden down there, maybe, you know, we've had somebody reach, that reached out to us not too long ago about, you know, rejuvenating a, a garden club, and, uh, so, uh, that discussion is ongoing, as is discussion relative to Maple Grove, we had a rather extensive discussion about that one last night, uh, and took a look at the map of where it would be, uh, there's been some concerns expressed in terms of, uh, invasion of, of the, uh, you know, of, of the green space, uh, and what it might do to the habitat, and the, the old environments, that's another technical term, that live-in the habitat.
Yes. Okay. Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and so, we're, we're looking for some additional input, I think, maybe from, we wanted to talk with you, Mr. Aman, I know you, I think you live up in that area, and, uh, I don't mean to pin it on you, but, you know, if, you know, if we can get, we're looking maybe for a little bit more, uh, a sense from the folks who live up there, uh, do they want to see anything, and if so, what would they like to see, or are they just content with it the way it is? So, it, it's on their, you know, it'll stay on the agenda, the parks will continue to have that conversation, and, and, um, we'll probably ask you to grab some more information if you can, maybe come join us in the next meeting. All right. Uh, that's all I got.
I had a question about Bullis Park. Any discussion about addicts and parking there? The ripbook picnic tables?
Yeah.
Anytime, anything gets discussed about happening there, everybody says, well, they're covered.
No, that we have, and, and there was some parking there at one time. Uh, when they're off of, um...
I don't remember.
Were there any slots, and then they throw some gravel down there at some point?
No, not at, I don't remember.
All right.
I can see.
That's really, well, that's, that's come up every time we've thought about putting anything that, with more activity, you know, something as opposed to what, you know, people would walk to a neighborhood park, so.
Yeah, so you, you talk about Pin Oak, you know, they have their own park, a beach area. Uh, so I think if someone, if someone were to use it, it would be someone that comes there from further away, so parking might make sense. And, you know, I, I think a lot of ways that it could be utilized, well, a nice thing about it is it's not in a neighborhood, so as far as noise or anything like that happens, you're really not going to be bothering with that many people in the, there's, what is that, the west, or the east side, you know, there's this house along there, but, I'm, I'm glad I was with you talking about it. Okay, uh, nothing more, the mayor's report, mayor's report, uh, Ms. Cook, any finance report?
Uh, a couple things, as you can see, I put something on, in front of you, this is from the Ohio Auditor of Fate. Um, these are the certified public records training, um, times and dates for this year. Now, this is, you can still go on their site and do it in segments, um, as some people have done in the past, if you don't have that kind of time. These are all three-hour live kind of Zoom sessions. The, the big thing about the live ones are, one, one and done. Secondly, there will be question and answers, and as you know, from, if you've ever been on a Zoom, you can ask questions and get answers while you're on that Zoom, so that makes, that's the big difference, but I wanted to make sure that I gave you what was available for those of you who haven't fulfilled your requirement, which is once every time you get elected, so, um, and because the auditors ask us to see your paperwork, as those of you who've been around them, so just wanted to let you know what's available. Um, I haven't heard anything on, on any of the other training from anybody, so please let me know if you're interested, or if I need to sign you up for anything else. Um, lastly, I'm going to be, in the next month or so, we're going to be unveiling a little bit, something new, it'll, it'll be on our website. Um, we, I asked the mayor, and he gave me permission to go ahead with, uh, become the Ohio Clerk Gov, they've partnered with, um, uh, Software Solutions, which is our VAP program, to do, to take our data and actually put it in graphs and, and, and things that makes it easier for the residents to view. So I have been busy giving them all our data and setting it up, then proofing it with them, so we're in the final stages of getting that together, so I'll let you see it when we get it launched, but basically, it should have, when they, when they go to the finance website, or the finance page, they should be able to see, um, a lot of things about our finances, whether it be revenue, expenses, even the checks themselves, I mean, you won't see the check, but you'll see the amounts and that kind of thing, and graphs that show you how the spending is done, and, and things that will, that should be easy to read, and, um, we will have four years of information up there from the, from the start, um, it won't be a month-to-month thing, because that, that's too much, they don't advise you that you do that, that you do it once a year. So that'll at least give some general information, and also some specific for those who want it, of what we're doing from year to year, for, and it should be, uh, a lot, uh, very user-friendly, so that will be coming up, hopefully, before April's done, we'll have everything in line, so that, I think, will really help out people when they want to come and find information out on our website. Um, so, that's a big thing, that, one of the big things that I'm working on right now, so I'm hoping that, like I said, that that'll be out before the end of April.
Susan, I think that's terrific.
I think that's fantastic.
I really, please, thank you.
Been working on it for a while, so when I talked to the mayor, and he, I, I said, look, this is, this is, they're partnering with them, and, and that, the, the whole purpose of it is to make something that's easy for residents to view and to understand, and like, that's the hard part, is making it easy enough that they don't have to take government accounting to understand what they're seeing. So, um, yeah, and also, um, for other people that want to know, our reports, our year-end reports are up on, you know, in the, on the website, you just have to search for them, they're there, and, um, I've been, I'm copying Katie every month on the monthly reports, so they should be able to go up there, so if people are interested, they can go into our website and get the, all the reports.
That's great.
That's very good. I, I have a question, um, I know with the Ohio checkbook and some others, you can see checks, you can see dollar amounts, but you can't see the accounts that those individual, when you, you know, and I know you won't be able to follow this, it's going to be the package that they give us, but you know, when you look at a check that's made out to, you know, Joe Smith's paving or whatever, whether you can see at least the accounts that that check came from?
Yeah, you should be able to see more about that, and I'll give you more information about it as we get it up and running, because right now, we're just, we've just kind of installed information, but yeah, that's the idea, of being able to do that kind of thing.
The phrase that I always like to use with accounting is making it digestible.
Yeah, and that, and that's...
So the person who's looking at it can digest it and, and make sense of it, because this government accounting stuff is different.
Yeah, and if you...
Funny, man.
Yeah, if you've taken it, even if you've taken accounting, you don't usually get government-funded accounting, it's so different, so you have to have your experience in it to be able to know what you're reading usually, so they should make it more digestible, and, and should also, um, help people just basically, uh, feel like they're, they've got a handle on what's going on, so.
So, all right, uh, next, next we have, old business?
The only thing I wanted to ask is, a while back, we started the process of electronic, changing our ordinances to electronic form, and we had the book, yeah, we, we had a lot of progress, uh, do we have an update on where we are with that?
Very close.
Okay.
We're very close. I just got done in this week, uh, working on the, uh, income tax code section of that, um, and making sure that all the, uh, the changes were incorporated into that. Uh, there's not much left to do. Uh, I'm hoping to have that to you folks, um, what's reasonable, um, hopefully by the middle of April, and then it'll just take a little process to, you know, I, I put together a, a summary of what you're going to be looking at, uh, but I got, uh, a couple more sections to, to tweak before I can give it to you, they're just sitting on my desk, staring at me every day, and, and so at least I got, I got a big chunk of it, the income tax piece was a big piece of it, and we got that under a belt now.
And will that be the same process to roll over to, I know you talked about when the, the officers say give it to, I don't know, using the Ohio advisor, so will that happen the same time when we approve that, that it go to the New Franklin?
Right, once you adopt, as soon as you adopt it, then they'll be citing under the New Franklin.
Excellent.
I would like to add that I gave every member of council a business spotlight nomination form, I gave mayor after one as well. I think it's a great idea, like, the resolution we had and everything. I'm hoping with, I haven't worked with media to get it on the website, hopefully it's just as easy as the citizen of the month that Mr., uh, that you've worked on before, but I think it's a great thing that we have it out there, pushed out there. It's not on the website yet, so you just email any of us on council about it, I forwarded to everybody, you can email me at DAlvin@NewFranklin.org, and I can easily just send you guys one of the review, and you've got your business is nominated, please send them over.
Good.
That's tough.
Any other old business? Any new business?
I'd like to talk a little bit about cemetery. Judy and I, I would, Ronnie over there, um, there's a meeting for a, uh, a community cleanup group to help clean the, the cemetery is up once or twice a year, I'd like to see what we can do to get that going, and be a voluntary, uh, situation, uh, you know, in the springtime, uh, in the fall, you know, maybe after a big storm, get out there, pick up some branches and things to help, uh, service department keep that, uh, the cemetery's looking good, uh, so I don't know what we can do, but we'll get that up on the, on the website for, uh, people to volunteer, and we'll have to get with, uh, Brian to pick out a couple of things to get a group of people over there.
Move through.
I love that.
Yeah, so, uh, as you had mentioned, the garden club being discussed, you know, that's something that many years ago, uh, I think the service director at the time, and his family planted flowers in front of Manchester Cemetery, might have done some other stuff. In other, other communities, you see the, the welcome to, you know, Sniffville, and you got some flowers, whatever, in the garden club. If it's right.
Um, we did have, we had an individual express an interest, and I know they were, they were out here before, um, so we'll put something together, and so we'll see if we can get some volunteers.
If we got some volunteers, well, same thing with the cleanup, I mean, it's appropriate for the city to provide supplies and, and things like that, for the volunteers, you know, trash bag, whatever, whatever painted, um, I think it'd probably be the same thing for the garden club, it should, garden club willing to volunteer to upkeep and maintain and water, because that's probably, you throw plants out there, and then if they're at my house, three weeks later, they're all dead.
Right, well, we had a group, and I can try to reach out to some of those same people, um, at the Tudor House, before we, uh, transitioned into the management agreement, they took that over, and we had, and they did a lot of nice work.
They could almost incorporate the two.
Yeah, so I mean, that's off the table, right?
Of the same line.
Right, the cleanup and, and a garden.
Because it isn't going to be a huge thing, but those people might be like-minded.
Right.
Or want to do both jobs.
Uh, I think we talked to Brian, I think he just said that he had a neighbor who had approached him about something to do over there, so he may already have a neighbor too that she believes.
All right, all right, I'll follow up on that.
Anyone else have anything for new business? And, okay, no, no, uh, any more public questions or answers regarding what you discussed tonight?
Uh, yeah, General, I'd be here.
I just need your address, can I?
Six, seven, oh, no, Kepplin.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I, first of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone, you know, I appreciate it, as a small business, the support, the mayor's support, you know, it matters, it's, uh, you know, it, it counts, and so we appreciate it as a family, and, uh, we were fortunate enough here, just a couple years ago, to build a home, um, out there in Kepplin, so that's, you know, that's where we'll be, and, uh, it's, it's nice just to keep it here in the community, you know, so I do appreciate it.
I appreciate what you do, General.
But, yeah, no, it's really, it, it, it matters to me and to my family, you know, to, to the guys, we keep it small, and, you know, it's, you take a lot of pride in what we do, um, just to kind of develop on that, uh, as far as the cemeteries go, um, if you, uh, we, we'd be happy to provide the mulch if you guys find people that would like to plant flowers, so you can just keep that in mind, or, you know, that way.
That'd be great.
But if we can provide the mulch for the, for the beds out front, I know that, you know, there, I know those beds are, like, tend to skirt footed. And as far as, just as a question, and again, I just, I wouldn't be here, but for you folks, I mean, the thing about it, discussing the cemetery is, I didn't want to interrupt that before, but, um, a lot of the time, in the interest of making things look nice, we have, and I've, I've spoken with Brian and the mayor about this before, we're in really difficult times, it's, it's very tricky, and you walk in five lines with, first of all, being respectful to people, that's, I mean, the sacred ground, we take that very, very seriously, um, so when you have, some folks, you know, will, will plant, uh, full bushes and trees and, and, and flowers and things, and it's like, yeah, it looks beautiful and it's nice, um, some people maintain it wonderfully, but then others, you know, life happens and they don't, and it just becomes a thing where we're not real sure what to do about the space, um, and the weeds, the grass starts to grow up through that, and you can't physically trim that or cut that or address it, and so it becomes very shaggy, and it makes it look as if though we're not taking care of the space, but, um, But I also tell people, like, you know, workers, stay away from that stuff because we've had issues before where we've had to explain what happened. You know, the trimmer, this extra string came out, and now it damaged, you know, a statue or a landscaping light or whatever this may be, you know. So again, it's not... I don't ever want to see this or I'm complaining because it's as for that person's loved one. But we, in the interest of making it look nice, we have a difficulty in kind of knowing where it begins and where it ends, you know. And so we're not real sure with, you know, what we're... We'll remove the dead things. We'll, you know... I've had folks that'll leave like an empty... They'll leave an empty drink up there, and someone went up and had a beer with their loved one, you know. That can't even afford one. We all, you know... We get rid of the things that are obvious, but there's a lot, you know, maybe to just consider as far as what can be used. You know, I always... At least again, this is just like a kind of a little small dream of mine, but with the flags that are put in place for all the letters, it's awesome. I've spoken to the Boy Scout leader because I know those guys, and we always thought, man, it'd be so nice if they had something that was weighted on the headstone itself or had one of the clips that hold it to the top of the stone versus the in-the-ground flag because it's impossible to make it look nice and trim and level and even without the grass growing up around it and then the trimmer damaging the flag and now the flag's laying and we're repairing those. It just becomes very problematic. And I know this is tedious little stuff that I feel silly even bringing it up, but as far as making things just look nice and uniform and maintained, those things go a long way.
Are the rules adequate? Are the rules that we have at the cemetery?
I honestly am not sure about exactly what the rules are. The mayor, you know...
Yes. We are into... On Friday, we will have our second meeting in terms of considering revisions to the rules. And so what preceded even the first meeting, which was a long meeting, was to have our new administrative assistant over in the Service Department, Courtney Testa, who's done a wonderful job, with some input from everybody else. Take a look at what we got, make some suggestions, and that's what's happened. And so the first answer is no. The current rules are not sufficient. We are in the process of crafting some rules that will address some of the concerns that you have there, if, you know, most if not all. And to bring it in, bring our rules in according to what we see in other cemeteries. Having said that, it is a sensitive area.
Absolutely.
And we're trying to be sensitive as we go through that process with what's been permitted before. And we have in one particular situation, it's going to be a hot button, and it's really hard even to relate it. It's... I mean, generally, you have the plot, and the idea is to plant flowers at one... We don't want flowers all the way around it, okay? You plant them on your plot, okay? Where... What's been difficult for a number of people is that as you drive the roads, the headstone is here and the plot is here. And if you plant flowers here, you don't see them from here. And so they like to plant them behind the headstone. Kind of makes sense, except that's not part of the plot, okay? So are we going to continue to permit that? Or are we not going to continue? And if they complain out here, can they also plant in there? So we're having some fun with that one. But it's serious business, and we take it that way. And, you know, we're working hard on the draft of that to try to alleviate some of those problems. The thing relative to the flags, we had a Boy Scout project we did, what?
Yeah. So what they do? So what they had, someone came up with wooden concrete and they're like a lid, like solo cup.
Yeah.
And put a wooden stick in this. Well...
It's in the ground, but that's where it's from.
Yeah. And it was breaking off. So what they did is they had... They put in these, now they're metal.
Sweet.
Yeah, it says U.S. Veterans on it. It's maybe an H Y, but it's about to stall. And, you know, it looks nice, and then the same thing. They put a... It has a little hole in top, and that wooden flag goes in there. Well, I know it's Ohio, and you get storms and now it breaks off, and the wooden part is in there, and there's no... I mean, it just be, you know... And so that's why, again, it's not that I have the solution. But having been there all the time, we look at it, and I think, man, it would be nice if those flags, because they'd be, I don't know, a thousand flags, you know, for Memorial Day, especially. If they had them mounted onto the headstone, you know, with a weighted...
Or should they make attachments like that?
Yeah. Or one of the nicest things, too, where I see folks go up and they spend a lot of money on these ornaments and, you know, flowers and things. They have the clip that will actually... It's like a spring-loaded clip that will hold on top of the headstone. And those flowers will last all season, sometimes for years, because they don't get touched. You know, they're out of the... They're up out of the... Off the ground. And then we can also just make everything look perfect around their stone. And again, it's, you know, it's the way people are. I mean, in some, like you said, that they decided to plant flowers on the other side, even though it's out there. And it's just too amazing, but some folks gotta run with it. And you have like full... Again, it's not... I'm not trying to make light of it, but like, I've taken pictures because I want to be able to say, well, I don't know, I would gladly address this if someone would tell me how. But there's a lot, and it's a family, and it's understandable. This is their whole families here. But they have helium balloons, they are knapsacks, change, like money, you know, landscape lights, mulch, like, and it's a versatile... I mean, they spend time, but then they go, and they let it go. And there are weeds like this. And so then I'm... I'm like, these poor weeds going, I don't want anyone to complain, but at the same time, we can't... I mean, we can't read this.